Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Here.
City manager, love.
Here.
All right, let's move on to, uh, give a few more minutes. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. Oh, there he is.
There he is. We missed you.
You're right.
Can I send an email out requesting to add an item if you would be willing to amend the agenda to add that?
Can I get a motion to add, uh, to approve the agenda with the addition of... What's that gonna be?
10D.
10D.
10D?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 10D. Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed upon as necessary.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'm Joe Moran. I'd just like to give you an update on the activities from the Community and Economic Development Board. As you know, with warm weather coming, we've got a kayak launch site that will be developed, and I'll be working with our superintendent to get that started and get it moving. We have continued discussions with the Clinton River Boat. They will be here at least one weekend this summer, and we're working on getting a couple more for them to come down. We're also working on an additional, um, engineering study, I guess, for the deep water dock down here in the city. Something new, um, I've gotten some quotes from the people that do the movie ads. You know, you sit in the movie theater and they do little ads before the theater that look kinda promising. We need to discuss it at our next meeting, and perhaps we'll have something to give you guys to look at later on, probably in April. We have a request into HGTV. They have a hometown series, and they have put the feeler out. They wanna rebuild or refurbish or redo somebody's hometown, and we've sent in an application with that, with 300 Broadway as the focal point for that. We're in discussions with the city of St. Clair. They have a shuttle bus, or we'll be starting a shuttle bus, and we hope to get that bus running back and forth between St. Clair and Marine City. We're also talking with the YMCA, getting them together with local schools, perhaps to develop a swimming program in the area. And we're open, willing, and in the process of partnering with groups and organizations here in town to accomplish anything and everything. So if you have an idea that you would like to see brought forward, please bring it to the Community and Economic Development Board meeting. Let us help you maybe bring that into fruition or hook you up with other partners that can get that happen. We meet third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM here in the fire hall, although the March meeting will be canceled because of we have budget workshop.
There we go.
Isn't that fun? If you have any questions or concerns later on, please bring them up, and I'll be happy to answer them for you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes for the city commission regular meeting February 20th.
Still move?
Support.
Any corrections, deletions, or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda for the special event permit for VFW poppy sales, the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive, and a business license for Blue Water Gift Shops.
Move we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Support.
Any question? No, we don't have any questions on that one. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
I wanted to ask one question though before I get back to them. I know in the past when we've had, um, groups soliciting for money in the, in the intersections, did you want to limit them to any, um...
We were asking not to use...
Charter and...
Charter and Parker because of the heavy truck traffic through there.
Did you want me to...
Is that good with the rest of the board?
But we've allowed people to do it, so...
Yes. Just ask if they could avoid that intersection for us.
Okay.
All right, moving on to financial business. Disbursements including payroll for $276,589.84.
Make a motion that we accept disbursements including payroll for $276,589.84.
Support.
Questions on it? Yes, Lisa.
Page five, like the last page. Is the water plant consolidation feasibility study, is that complete? Or is that part of our partial payment?
It's not quite complete. I think they're about, what, 80% done, Mike?
How much more do we owe them? Do you know?
I don't know offhand, no.
All right, that's it.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
All right, moving on to unfinished business computer network support service bid.
So we bid this service out about three years ago and selected High Tech as our service provider. We actually did a little bit more notice this year. Unfortunately, we did not get any other bids other than High Tech for this service. So it's the only people that we had apply or provide an RFP for this service and looking to approve based on their price sheet.
Is that towards the end there? What is the total, I mean?
So the annual flat rate fee, we're on the premium plan, would be $12,312 per year. And then the...
Any ex... we'd have extras?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Will we have extras on top of that?
There generally are, yes.
And you got website development? I thought we were already doing that.
We're not gonna be paying for website development. That's if they did it, that's what the cost would be. And we're almost complete with the website development, uh, looking at close to the end of March or beginning of April when we'll be going live with the new website.
So you want us to approve the premium plan flat rate fee?
Yes. Or monthly fee. They'll bill us monthly either way, it's the same amount.
How are we priced wise compared to what they charged us last year?
It's up just a little bit.
Within one or two percent, or...
I don't have the numbers, I'm sorry.
Can't count them into coming in at the same amount based on the type of service we were getting?
I could ask them, but I think that'd be a hard sell because their costs have increased.
That's true, but, you know, we also expect, if we have a premium plan, we expect premium service and...
I think we can use this as an opportunity to ensure that they take their service level up a notch and address the issues that we've had to this point.
But I see the number of bidders we have with it. Kinda... Why would they, why would we not get more bids? Would you think?
It's, this is a tough market right now. These people are, yeah, it's...
I did even, I did even hear from one person that said they just, they weren't gonna bid because they didn't have staffing.
A lot of communities are struggling right now to get, to get bids on these projects.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to approve the bid? And this is a three-year?
They've actually priced out really just this year, and then for '21, '22, and '23, it'd be not to exceed 5% increase.
But as far as you're concerned, we're just doing this for one year at this point?
We could.
Elaine, what, what's in there as far as, because once we move City Hall and everything, are they the ones that are gonna do all of that for us? I'm assuming.
Yes, and it would be at the hourly rate because that'd be out of contract. The things we'd primarily be looking for them to move is moving the server and getting that all set up, and then setting up the address information to point the server in the right direction, getting everything, all the connections reestablished.
Are they also moving our phones too?
Our phones are plug and play.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with them then?
No. And then we'll, we'll move our computers and get everything set up and ready for them.
So on a motion, are you looking to accept the, their, their rate for one year?
It could be one year or the four years.
We won't have to know today on the, we just, at least need to do the one year to keep a contractor in there. Cause he's...
I would do one year, and, and we can always try again next year and see if we get lucky.
We could.
So I can get a motion for one year for now?
Make a motion to approve the bid from High Tech for one year for the amount of, the premium plan for the amount of $12,312.
All right, support.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to lawn care maintenance bids.
You wanna talk about this, Mike? Or you want me to? So you have the information before you of the bids that we received regarding the lawn care maintenance, bids from Downriver, Tommy's, and Yard Tech. Based on the bids that we received and the budget numbers that Mike was able to put together prior to us going out for bids, he was recommending that we continue to maintain the lawn care maintenance using part-time employees. And he has provided some detailed information about his costs. I know one of the questions that's been presented to me about the costs is, it does not take into account the complete picture of what a general business owner would have to provide, such as the, the building costs and the insurance. And one of the things that we've talked about is that we kind of have economies of scale here, that we have the building, we have all the insurance and everything that we have to pay for regardless because we have such a big garage with all of our DPW equipment in there. Other than that, I think he's done a pretty good job at breaking down the costs. He's got the, the fuel in there and the wages and the, um, additional taxes that we have to pay for the employees.
Yes.
I was looking this over. I don't know where we put out for bids, but I know there was a lot of companies, my understanding, didn't even know we were bidding this out. I've got a lot of questions, but I know you've been super busy with the budget, and I've got some additional information I've got coming in from elsewhere. So I'd like to know if we could just postpone this particular item for one meeting so that we could obtain a little bit more information.
What kind of information would we need to get so that we can prepare?
Well, I got a list, but I wasn't gonna do all that here, but I wanna... I've got, I've got a lot of information and questions.
Yeah, we're, we're still gonna be working on the budget through next week. That's something that we're trying to be able to get to you when our packets go out on Thursday. Still working on the wage summary information and some of the insurance numbers. I don't know if I'll have a lot of opportunity over the next week to do that. It won't be really until the week after.
We can postpone it for the two meetings. It's not gonna, it's not going anywhere, but...
When do we get to a point where we need to start mowing or get on someone's schedule for mowing?
Well, I thought the, the idea was to try somebody else for a year to see what, this year to see what happens, to see if it relieves some of the help that he has to help him do other stuff that needs to be done in the city. Then I didn't expect to see him bid on it. Or you could give us a package. I, I think there's a lot missing off of this because you've got trailers, trucks, other equipment...
He's got that in here.
That's involved in that.
Can I comment on that?
So...
Please do.
Um, the truck and trailer is the Suburban red car truck we got from the, um, car department years ago. And we use one trailer, which we use all year long. That's it. That's all we use.
There's no maintenance on that?
That maintenance is spread through the whole year. We use that trailer just not for lawn care. We use it for hauling our equipment around. We use it for hauling Smith mixers, blocks, vanal covers.
So, so if you were using, you had a sewer job and you were using that to haul the sewer equipment around on, it wouldn't be available for the lawn stuff?
Well, we could drop the trailers, the lawn stuff off at Park, at King Road Park and use what we need and take it back.
I'm also trying to gather some costs from several other communities. I already have one sorted in. Somebody's verifying, and it's a lower cost actually than what...
What was quoted? Is it similar though? Or is it the same like acreage? Are they doing cemeteries?
That's why I wanna get the rest of the information. And that's why I say, you know, I mean, this is okay, but I'd like to see the bids to see what they put in here. All, all we get is this. Then I looked at our wage and benefits chart. We don't even list these three employees that we always hire part-time, which we could, even if they're new every year. They're not even on here. Because we have three full-time DPW U and you have two part-time guys already, and then you hire another three.
Another two.
So you're using one of these guys then?
Yes.
Elaine, when we put this out for bid, we put it out into the world...
When I had, I had three other contractors calling me that were supposed to show up on the day of the pre-bid meeting, they never showed up.
And they didn't, right.
Those three companies showed up there. They were expecting a whole lot more people there too. Cause everybody up and down the river was telling them that they were coming to this meeting because they wanted to bid on it. And that's what showed up.
Yep.
I just know there was quite a few that didn't even know, so...
Like who?
All I'm asking for is that we see if we can pull a little bit more data. I just wanna clear it all up. I want, I'd like to get a little bit more of this data from a couple of the other communities. That's all I'm asking.
How, how long could we potentially delay this and not cause any issues?
If this weather starts keeping like this, we're gonna be cutting grass.
Middle of April.
Yep.
Cause we have our next, we have our second meeting in March, could we do it then?
We could do the second meeting without really throwing them off too much. But I was really surprised those were the only two that bid.
There was three.
Yeah, but I meant...
He pulled out.
Yeah, but I... I was really shocked that's the only two.
So it's not like we're not, we're not do, it's not like we're not doing our due diligence. We did put it out for bid, and you can't, you know, you can only bring the horse to water. You can't make them drink, right?
Where did we put the ad?
On the Marine City webpage.
I saw it.
And...
And posted at my shop and also at the guy center. It's like we do for everything else.
Yeah, people that seriously want the business, and this is what I found with IT, is that they have Google Alerts, that they're constantly out there with Google Alerts. Tell me if there's RFP plus lawn mowing in this area code, state, whatever.
Yeah, well...
And we knew about it.
Word gets around.
Most of, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't bid on it and we weren't gonna bid on, but we all knew about it.
Right.
Some of us just chose not to because it's commercial bidding and...
That's, I heard the same thing.
Most of us, a lot of, a lot of companies have stopped bidding on commercial just because it's, or not commercial, but municipal because of the, the, it's been bid down so low at, at times. Maybe it's coming back up, I don't know.
I think what it really comes down to is doing the thing that makes the best financial sense. And if there is an opportunity that there is something that we're missing and we can expend a couple weeks just to look into it.
That's all I'm asking.
If that's too much to ask?
No, that's no problem. If anybody's got an objection to it, we'll just table it for two weeks. Anyone have an objection to that?
Maybe you should do that by motion.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this till the next meeting. Support.
Motion, support. Any continued questions on it? It will be just for two weeks, Mike will get it resolved in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Well, we need it resolved by probably next Thursday for when packets go out.
Just put it on there.
We'll put it on, it's gonna be done. Let's put, put it on next.
Well, if we have any additional material to go in packets, we would need that by Thursday.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Moving on to Bell River, no, the, um, lot split. 6280 King Road.
We have our applicant in the back.
How you guys doing tonight? Brian Crampton from 6280 King Road.
Any...
So this has been the Planning Commission in St. Clair County for review and approval, and it has been approved at both of those levels. One of the final things that has to be done is that it comes to city commission for final approval.
So can we get a motion to approve the lot split?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot split at 6280 King Road.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was easy.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
It was a good presentation.
Sometimes less is better.
Less is more.
Uh, moving on to the Bell River Pump Station, check valve.
I am definitely going to defer to Mike on this one.
Yes.
I've been a little busy with the budget, so I'm not on top of this as well as he is.
Okay. Pump number four. We got it replaced, installed, opened the valves backed up, and found our pump running backwards. There's a check valve on, on top of the valve, and what happened, or we actually don't know what happened to it because we're afraid to take it apart, so, we tried to find parts for it, can't find parts, it's obsolete. Anyways, the water's coming back through from the force being coming through back in our clear well, and we're double pumping. So we need to get this check valve repaired, or I'm sorry, replaced, so we can utilize pump four.
Port starts raining again.
What's that?
Port starts raining heavy again.
Before it starts hitting already, yes, before it starts raining heavy again.
So you need a motion to waive competitive bids?
Yes.
And, and besides that, you also want a total of $10,000?
For anything on...
Just in case?
Yes.
All right. Um, I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the installation of a service pump.
Support.
Any other questions on it? Just the waiving competitive bids. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to the actual purchase of the check valve.
I'll make a motion that we approve a budget not to exceed $10,000 for this job, pump station.
Support.
Any questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
All right, moving on to salt prices.
I come here and cringe when you say that.
I actually did, we did really well this year. So I'm, I'm, I'm not as cheap as you, but we're getting closer.
I'm catching up to you.
I know, I'm enjoying that.
It's coming up. Anyways, um, my deal for salt purchase, we do this every year. We can't get a price per ton until everybody does their order. Goes up. We jumped from last year from 47 to $78 this year, and I'm expecting it to probably go up another, maybe 90 to 100.
Wow. You'd be surprised.
I'm hoping.
We paid 87 the other day.
You paid 87?
Two, two gravel chains we brought.
Cool, there is hope.
Yes, it came off of the freighter, so we bought as much as we could, so...
Mine doesn't come off a freighter.
Huh?
Mine doesn't come off a freighter.
I know.
Okay.
I know.
So anyways, um, so I have to have my order in by the middle of March, so...
So all we're doing right now is to waive competitive bids?
Yes.
Cause later on we'll do the salt purchase.
Well, I have, once I order it in March, I'm committed to it.
Right.
So you could do both tonight?
Both tonight, okay. So can I get a motion to waive competitive bids on the salt prices?
Make a motion, we waive competitive bidding on the salt order.
Right.
Support.
Any questions on waiving of the competitive bids? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then moving on to the actual, uh, putting in the order.
Yes.
So I need a motion to put in the order for the salt.
Even though we have no cost on...
Is there a specific tonnage?
Is there a certain tonnage to order?
I have to go in, I believe there's, I'm gonna be about 2, 250.
Cause I mean, we don't have a price to...
Exactly.
Price per ton.
Well, you can, you can put in for your order.
I won't know the price for a month or two.
Right.
It's kind of a catch-22 because to be able to participate in the my deal, he has to put his order in. And the my deal is supposed to be the best pricing that they can get.
Okay, Mr. Lawyer, so how do we...
You make a motion to approve the purchase of salt and the amount determined to meet the needs of the community based on your superintendent.
There you go.
That's so good.
We'll make that motion. Love it, I love it.
Turn it off now.
Again, less is better, right?
Yes.
Got that, Chris?
Yeah.
We got a motion, second? Did we get a second?
Support.
Support.
Okay.
I made the motion. I made the motion to support what he said.
Did you second?
Sure.
We're supporting what he said, what she said.
Third base.
There's no other questions? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Baccannon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the geotechnical pavement investigation.
So these are borings that need to be conducted on the parking lot to determine that guaranteed maximum price for the city hall project. I did speak with representatives from the architecture firm today. They did apologize for getting this to you so late. I asked if there was anything else that we would be getting for that guaranteed maximum price. He said this is it. He does have someone that's ready to go Monday to do its four borings at a depth of five feet. And the attorney has reviewed the contract, and everything looks okay from his perspective.
They didn't want to bring it up to us last meeting?
I don't think that they had it last meeting. I don't know if they were coordinating, trying to get a firm.
Did they know they needed this last meeting? Is this something they're adding?
Yes. I talked to them about that, and they did apologize.
So honestly, no more surprises?
That is what I asked, is I said, is this the last thing that you need to get done before that guaranteed maximum price? One thing that he did do, the original quote that he got was closer to 3,000, and he knew that I would be able to approve things to that $2,000 limit, and I didn't really feel comfortable being the only authority approving this. I wanted to bring it before the board. Because if by chance there's some additional service that needs to be done, I felt that that would be circumventing the system that we have in place for approvals.
And if there's more work, then we got to follow his schedule here.
Correct.
For all this.
Well, we used our authority number to bring the number down, and now we're not... And now here we are.
So we would need to waive competitive bidding and approve this. Otherwise, we'll further hold up the project.
For a lump sum of $2,000.
They didn't submit through anything else but this bid?
Correct. And one of the things that they are supposed to do for us as our agent is to go out and actively get the best pricing.
Now, how are they going to determine where they're going to borrow? You know, there's a CT cabinet over there with two lines running, high-power lines running across that new parking lot.
So Project Control Engineering completed the...
Topographic.
The topographic survey earlier this week, so they'll be working with them to determine the locations where they'll be doing those four borings.
Those will be found on mist dig too.
Yeah, I know. Mike's been out marking.
Are you going to have to cement them when you cross them? In the parking lot? Usually if you put a high-power electrical in underground, and then you got to cement it if it's over a parking lot or driveway.
Yeah, but they're just doing a boring for...
No, I'm just thinking ahead because I don't want to be...
What do you?
Having somebody hit something that they didn't realize was there. Topograph will just give you elevations if they're not telling you.
Mike's been out and has done the mist dig for the site.
We have all our piping underground, mud, salt, and rainwater, everything. I will be on-site with them. And the driveway, they won't be bringing up and putting the system to square it. Grass fire part, just go back in.
Just a question.
So can I get a motion to waive competitive bids?
Support.
Any further questions on the waiving competitive bids? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Baccannon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now for a motion to actually approve the work.
I'll make a motion. We approve the soil boring for $2,000.
Support.
Any further questions on it? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Baccannon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
No.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Commissioner... City Manager's report.
So as I've mentioned, been working with the New Treasure and all of the department heads on the budget preparation. Things are going pretty good. It's going to be very different than it's been in the past. We're working on streamlining things and making things a little bit easier. We're done with our department head meetings. We'll be working on it next week and getting it finished up and hopefully out to you barring any other issues. Was able to sneak out of the office for a workshop at SEMCOG for infrastructure asset management while Megan was working on payroll. And it was a very interesting meeting where there were some good information that was provided and worksheets that I think we'll be able to work through to better plan and know where we are with our infrastructure. That's all I have.
Any questions for City Manager?
I've got one. I know at one time you used to give us this report, and this was before this board. And we asked for more detail. And now it changed again, and we're kind of getting less detail. And it's hard to tell what you're working on and what you're not working on. So I know we require this from all our other department heads, but could we get something a little different in the format?
I can work on it. It's been tough with the transition with Megan and trying to wear too many hats at once. Once we get through the budget and Megan kind of settled in, I think it'll free up a little bit more time for me to provide a little bit better information, more detail.
It would be more helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I got to say, I haven't loved that either.
Okay.
Any other questions for the City Manager?
There's nothing on here though, but the committee to help you with the new city hall, have we done anything with that yet?
For materials? No, we have not, though that is something working towards that guaranteed maximum price. If there were some people that would be able to meet within the next couple of weeks with the architect to be able to go through some of these materials, that's something if you wanted to...
Yeah, we can...
Well, I'll have it on the next agenda.
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Next agenda might... We might be past it by then.
It won't take us long to do it, I don't think. I don't think it would be a quick issue. I don't see that it would be a big, long, drawn-out issue.
We'll add it to the next agenda then.
Any other questions for the City Manager? All right, moving on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Report. Cheryl, would you like to get us started?
Joe Moran really talked about the Economic Development Committee and what we're doing with that, which is a great thing. Pardon me. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday night, Sunday morning, we are springing forward with our clocks, so we get to enjoy another hour of daylight. And that's all I have.
I've got a little something I'd like to read. Just I just want to... I would like to just read this real quick, and I'd like to dismiss any rumors about why I'm not running again for the commissioner's seat. I guess there are things out there on the street or people are saying some things. So I just want to dismiss any of those rumors. I understood when I was appointed to this position that it was for a limited time. I felt that I wanted to give back to my community and help where I could. And so I felt honored to be appointed and to be able to bring a fresh set of eyes and ears to Marine City. Being a commissioner has given me the opportunity to see better how our city works and where it needs to grow, and to hear what the citizens' concerns are. That being said, I feel that I have fulfilled the responsibility of the seat while I have been in it. At this time, or it is time for someone new to come in and step forward. Another person with a set of fresh eyes and to see, ears ready to listen, and new ideas to bring. Which brings me to say that I do encourage term limits. It is only through term limits that we are able to keep bringing vibrant ideas into the mix and not have the same old, same old, time again and again, so that Marine City does not become a grain of sand in a desert of obscurity. I encourage the citizens of Marine City to pick up their applications for either commissioner or mayor at the city offices as soon as possible. Marine City is a wonderful city, one that needs to continue to move forward and not get stuck in the sand. Thank you.
Well, Planning Commission approved the concept of the new condominiums and the storefront downstairs at their meeting. Talked a little bit about they needed a variance, which they went to the ZBA and got a variance for the 10 feet that they needed between the hotel and themselves there. So that's all ready to go now.